All right, Alexander, I think we're ready. All right, good evening, everybody. This is the December 21st, 2022 Meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. It is the shortest day of the year, so the days only get brighter from here on out. We're going to begin this evening with a public hearing on a couple of our policies that require a public hearing prior to change. So I would invite a motion to open the public hearing. Brian? I have a motion from Brian and a second from Matt and all in favor of opening the public hearing. Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. So this is a public hearing, the public hearing is open. This is related to policies BBAA, School Board Member Authority, and policy BDB, Board Officers for, and that policy is to be deleted. And I'm going to invite Denise to give us an overview of the policies before we invite speakers.
Thank you. So in policy BBAA, School Board Member Authority, there really, we added a reference to BBAB and deleted the reference to BDB. And the reason for that is what we found is that the information in BDB could be incorporated into BBAB. And so we added that reference in this policy BBAA. I know they're all similar. And then the only other change is that we changed it to reference the number of board members delegated to a committee may never equal a quorum of the board. And then, as I mentioned, in BDB, we took the information, the relevant information, and incorporated it into, and I'm saying it again, BBAB. So that that information that pertains to the chairperson and the role of the chairperson and the vice-chairperson is now part of that other policy. So it pretty much summarizes it.
Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to speak, ask questions, or provide an input on the policies that Denise outlined, BBAA and BDB? All right, with that, I will invite a motion to close the public hearing. Denise?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
We have a second from Brian. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you. All right. Next up is the approval of the agenda. In addition to the agenda items that we have here, I'd like to add one item under the Discussion Action Items for a Board Election Item from UC. So I will move approval of the agenda with that addition. A second from Denise. Is there any other discussion about the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. All right. Next up is a public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak at public comment this evening? All right. We'll move on then to the approval of the minutes from the November 17th Budget Workshop. Brian? We have a motion to approve the November 17th Minutes. Second from Matt. Any additions or corrections on the November 17th Budget Workshop notes? All those in favor of the Budget Workshop notes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. And we also have the December 7th Regular Meeting Minutes. Brian? We have a motion from Brian, second from Matt. Any discussion on the December 7th Minutes? All those in favor of approving the December 7th Minutes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Those minutes are approved also. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Good evening. Rebecca Noe from the high school. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Dead Fred, but our emergency personnel in the district are very familiar with Dead Fred. He is a dummy in Mrs. Best's forensics class, and he has ended up in the window sometimes and has had spotlight shown on him, or people have stopped by to make sure everybody's okay. But he's used in forensics for many different things. And so I, this week, was a suspect in the forensics class for the murder of Dead Fred. And I was fingerprinted and had mugshots. And what the kids do, they have different suspects throughout the building. They're learning about fingerprinting, and they get to learn all the different vocabulary that goes with that as they try to figure out a crime scene. And so it's just a lot of fun to be able to participate in that and see the kids in action and using their learning in a fun way. We had our vaping, drugs, alcohol, and teens night. Not too many people came for the evening, but it is part of our presentation that we like to have a series every year for parents. So we are going to work on having that recorded for parents next year and have the information out a little bit earlier. But we did have a couple of families participate and a couple of people from the district come. And so our LAIDAC and our SRI were able to present and did a very good job. And so we'll keep working on those throughout the year. We're working on the rest of that series, and I think our senate is actually looking at a mental health panel. And that's something that our school and the school community and the kids are very interested in. And so that's something that should be coming up in the next few months. And then we'll come up with a third topic also. The program of studies will be coming out in early to mid-January, and so I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. It'll be well-publicized. I'll put that in the newsletter repeatedly, and we'll make sure everyone has access to that on the web. And then we just wanted to do a very big thank you for the half-day on Friday. Everybody is very excited about that, so just a big thank you to you for voting for that. Any questions? Thank you.
I have one real quick. Did you do it, or are they still trying to solve the mystery?
I'll never tell.
Others from the district? And from the board? Well, I had a chance to watch one of the elementary concerts last week, and it was here for the high school concert last night, as I know several of the people who are here were. The elementary concert, the Mohermet concert, was really, really fun with the fourth graders. And the concert last night featuring the high school band orchestra chorus and chamber orchestra was outstanding. This is my first time attending one of the holiday concerts from high school. So we have a band member here. Congratulations. It was a really good, really good evening. All right. We'll move on then to district reports. First up, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. This evening, Rachel will be presenting about her work for the first semester with DEIJ, and so I welcome Rachel to come on up.
Got it. Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, pronouns she/her/hers, Diversity Equity Inclusion and Justice Coordinator for the district. Today, we are going to be going over the position semester in review, kind of highlighting and reviewing the goals that were outlined in the transition plan that was approved earlier, I think in August or September. So this is going to be a two-part presentation. As I said, this part is going to be outlining the goals and just kind of covering what was accomplished or how I met those goals. And then the second half of the presentation, that will be in mid-January, and that's going to cover more of the overview of the DEIJ Teacher Professional Development Plan, also the evaluation metric that's going to be approved by the superintendent to evaluate this position, and then also a set of new goals for next semester. So that's what you can expect today. So just a review of the goals. There was six outlined. I didn't want to do a month-by-month, even though that was on the transition plan. And so we have goal number one, coordinating the superintendent's DEIJ Community Group and the steering committee. Goal two, meeting with students in student-led groups. Goal three, introducing myself to the community. Goal four, meeting with the faculty regularly. Goal five, communicating, collaborating, learning, and growing with the community around this work. And then goal six, identifying needed professional development for staff, developing plans for this PD, and then beginning to implement the PD plan. So I'll slowly go through each section, and I'll just highlight a few core elements from each. But you can see on the slides the full list of different things that I've done. So going into the superintendent's DEIJ Community Group and the steering committee, I've had the opportunity to convene this group over the course of the semester. For context, this steering committee is comprised of a group of representatives and stakeholder groups within the community group. And so they really help to inform the structure of the meetings and also plan out the agenda. And we try to meet at least one week before we have the actual meeting. And so this semester, we had Val Wilson, who is a middle school teacher. Next semester, Vivian Jablonsky, who's a high school teacher, will actually be covering that role. We had Kristen Fercilius, a community member and parent, Paige Burt, a high school student, and the student representative on the school board. And then also Suzanne Philpon, the Assistant Superintendent. So having a representative from all these different stakeholder groups to really help inform what we're going to cover in each meeting has been really fruitful for me and also just really successful, I feel, in general. We've had meetings on a monthly basis for the actual community group. And we've met a total of three times, and our core questions have been, where have we been? So reflecting on what we've accomplished, where do we want to go? So brainstorming for the future. And then, how do we want to get there? So the actual development of the action plans of how we want to proceed with those actions. And anyone interested in joining or looking at the work that we're doing, the meeting notes and agendas can be found on the district website. Moving into meeting students and supporting the student-led groups, there's actually been some overlap between this and the next goal, so introducing myself to the community. But a few highlights from this. I've been able to meet with at least six middle school and high school advisories. I've introduced myself to all high school students in grade assemblies. I got to take a little break and do some fun reading to kindergartners, so that was really fun. And then also meeting with the Student Jedi Group, whether that's to help inform some of the things that they're doing or, you know, just to meet and, you know, catch up with them, check in. Oh, and I was also interviewed for a Mouth of the River profile piece, which will be coming out in January, so that's fun. Introducing myself to the community. So I think some school community introductions to really pinpoint. I really found it a priority to introduce myself at the first teacher workshop day. So I went to each school to make sure that I introduced myself to all faculty, who I am, how they can contact me, where I'll be stationed, all very important. I also reintroduced myself and clarified my objectives, roles, and priorities to high school faculty at the end of October. This is a new role, so I think the reintroduction process has been really important this first semester. And I'm hoping in second semester, as folks are getting used to me, less of the introduction piece will have to be there. I had scheduled days in the buildings. That lasted for a good two months. And then, you know, I had to, like, go to different buildings for different meetings. I had, it was actually a really good problem. I had more folks reaching out to me, so I had to be in a lot of different spaces. So even though I wanted designated days in the buildings, it just wasn't working out to be that. So I let all the teachers know that they can contact me on an appointment basis, and so that's been working really well. And then, lastly, I did some coffee and conversations. This was just a way to have a more intimate, small-group setting to talk with teachers, to meet with them, hear about different issues that were happening in the buildings. I did two at Masway, one at Mohermet, and one at the middle school, and so those were pretty fruitful as well. Meeting with faculty regularly. So teachers have reached out to me over 25 times this semester, and I've served as a thought partner with them in addressing bias incidents or situations that have come up, you know, with students in the classroom or different difficult dialogues that might arise, answering different curriculum questions. So should I teach this? Is it legal to teach this? Can I do this? Can I say this? And helping to facilitate and navigate difficult conversations that might, you know, come up in the classroom. And then I've also excitingly been invited to attend classrooms and lead guest lessons at least five times this semester, including talking with students and giving them perspectives on DEIJ for their research proposals in a senior discussion course, leading an equity-based activity for three sessions, sections of sophomores in their writing course, or, I'm sorry, in their English course, and then facilitating a lesson for a senior writing course on the differences between building a character versus a caricature. And so those were pretty successful. And then communicating, collaborating, and learning and growing with the community around this work. So not only have I had the pleasure to connect with faculty and students in the district, but I think also doing this work statewide and thinking about how we're connecting to different organizations and different resources within New Hampshire that we can potentially collaborate with to bring to the district. So within that, you know, some of my key priorities, I've been helping with the elementary, middle school, and high school PLCs. I've met with counselors on a number of different things, school librarians, definitely principals. We've had bi-weekly meetings to just, you know, touch base, get a pulse on what's happening and how I can best support them in navigating different situations. The New Hampshire School Administrator Association, I've gotten the chance to do a panel there and also present in collaboration with different stakeholders here to talk about the great work that we're doing with DEIJ. Talking to the state senate on teacher shortages, recruitment and retention. Something really important, meeting with statewide DEIJ directors. There's now four of us, so we're staying strong. But I think that's been really helpful in talking through with, like, folks in Exeter, Manchester to see what they're doing, or like, if I have a question, I reach out to them, and I'm like, do you have any resources on this? So that's helped a couple of times. The Oyster River Alumni Association, working to advertise their Classroom Diversity Library project, and that's been really fruitful, and a lot of teachers have participated. So we're really hoping that, you know, they'll get those books after the holiday break. And then also connecting and collaborating with different community groups, whether that's New Hampshire Listens, Seacoast Outright, and also UNH Staff and Students. And now we're going to get into the heart. So identifying the needed PD for staff, developing plans for that PD, and begin implementing the PD plan. And so today, I mostly just wanted to go over the DEIJ Teachers' Needs Assessment that I sent out and created alongside New Hampshire Listens, because this has been really an effort to kind of have teachers co-collaborate in their own professional development, right? So I think it's different than me coming in and just observing and making assumptions of what teachers need, but actually taking a pulse of what are they actually saying that they need? And how can I use this data to really inform and bring in resources and workshops for them? So a brief overview of the assessment. There was 10 questions in total. Multiple selection, open answers, and Likert scale ranking questions. And the questions were adapted using the Bayley Framework, Learning for Social Justice Standards, and Learning for Justice Curriculum Practices. And they addressed some core questions, so looking at the broad areas of DEIJ. What DEIJ topics or PD do they want to explore? And then looking at the four different elements, so curriculum and instruction, educator leadership, learning environment, and models of professional development. So some highlights when we look at the assessment findings. 151 teachers in total completed the survey, which is honestly really great. That's over half of our teacher staff. And with the highest being high school teachers, so those were the largest amount of educators to fill it out. And the three highest-ranked topics that folks are most interested in were race, disability, and gender, which was actually a little surprising to me, because I think throughout my interview process and also in conversations with teachers, many times I think a lot of folks say socioeconomic status rises to the top, and as we can see on this, it was number five. But I hear less about disability, so that was really informative for me to think through, this is what folks are saying. And so are there potential opportunities to engrain this in PD for teachers in the future?
Quick clarification. Was sexual orientation on that list?
So it wasn't explicitly named. However, I think because we have gender and then sexism, I think the gender was meant to overarch that. And we will get more into that as we move forward through the findings. Okay. So I want to quickly go through some of these charts. So these were the ranking that we asked teachers to consider for their professional development as most useful or least useful. And so these are some of the core areas that rose to the top. So when we look at curriculum and instruction, the pink can be seen as extremely useful, and then the purple, very useful. So some of the things that rose to the top, confronting prejudice, valuable conversations and facilitation, and then facing conflict. So those are some core things that I'll want to embed in PD as I move forward and think about curriculum and instruction. When we look at educator leadership, so this is looking more at their own professional development as educators, as leaders in this work. So on here, it is in blue as extremely useful, and orange, very useful. So some of the things that rose to the top were building relationships with a student focus, and then also addressing bias. And that's actually been an ongoing theme that I've seen all throughout, all throughout the findings. Going into learning environment, so this is looking at more of like, how are students kind of experiencing the classroom? And what do teachers need help with in terms of, like, you know, coordinating that with students? We can see this in purple and green, and some of, if I'm being honest, all of these rose to the top, as you can see throughout here. But some of the core areas that really rose to the top were socioeconomic inclusivity, race, ethnic, cultural inclusivity. And then, you know, the rest were also on the high end of very useful. So we can see a high need in all these, all these sections to embed in some professional development. And then I think something that was most useful for me, as someone who's going to be a facilitator and also, you know, bringing in resources for the teachers, was thinking about the models of professional development. So we listed a couple key areas, so, you know, participating in dilemma circles, engaging in PLCs, joining a book group. We can see throughout here that actually a lot of these are within the moderately useful area. So that's really great information for me in terms of thinking about, how can I be more creative in the approaches that we embed in our workshops or in our professional development that, you know, teachers are going to actually hold on to a bit more and really engage with a bit more fruitfully? Because it shows here that these are useful in some sense, but teachers are wanting something maybe a little different. So as we dive more into the qualitative portion of the assessment, which I would say is where I got a lot of the heart of what's needed. We can see on here a list of what teachers really addressed that they needed or the themes that rose to the top. But I think some of the key ones, you know, age and classroom appropriate approaches and resources, how to address bias and microaggressions in the classroom, learning about bias, talking about topics of race, gender, disability, and class. And as we can see in the italicized, in particular, talking about gender identity, pronouns in the LGBTQI plus community in legal, inclusive, and developmentally appropriate ways. So a lot of people did bring up gender, but it was in terms of, how do we support our trans students? How do I use the right language? You know, how do I incorporate pronouns? What does that mean? How do I do this? So I saw a lot of that in terms of gender. Less time on the theory and more on actionable, intangible approaches. So, you know, teachers want to go to a workshop and feel like, okay, I can immediately leave and use this in my practices tomorrow. I don't want to, like, be kind of strung up in the theory. And then the other piece was finding more time to connect and talk with one another across school grades and classrooms. So that kind of interdisciplinary practice and really getting time to talk with other teachers about these topics. And then if we take a closer look at the school-based themes, these were some of the themes that rose to the top. So for Masway, age-appropriate tools and resources, helping with curriculum topics, and incorporating more diversity in their music lessons, that actually came up a couple of times. And then Mohermet, increasing diversity in their classroom library, discussing topics at appropriate developmental levels. So we kind of can see that across both elementary schools. Middle school, the biggest one was gender identity and pronouns, supporting transgender and non-binary students, which actually has been a common thread throughout the semester in thinking about, how can we do this? We have a lot more students who are identifying differently or are using different names. We have a lot more students who are identifying differently, or are using different names, pronouns, like, as a teacher, what can I do? How do I do this correctly? How do I support my student? And then in high school, we see the curriculum representation discussion, helping students understand systems of discrimination, and then talking about race and racism. So, all of this, I will be using to inform the PD plan, but I think it's also important to note that although this is from one data assessment, working with New Hampshire Listens, who, you know, Oyster River has had a relationship with for like the past five years or so, that's been also very informative to look at some of the past data as well. And I see those core themes year and year again, because I looked at some things from 2019, 2020. They're common threads that keep rising to the top, particularly around bias. And so thinking about, how can we embed this a bit more in our professional development for teachers? So, this was part one of the presentation. Part two of this presentation will take place on Wednesday the 18th, and include, as I said, the draft of the PD plan for teachers, updated goals for next semester, and then also an evaluation tool for this position. But with that, because I've been talking at you for a long time, does anyone have any questions? Yeah?
Surprise, surprise. Thank you, Rachel, it's been great to see the range of activities that you've done over the year. I have two questions, one short of one. Do we have any sense, maybe not through you, but through other administrators or teacher groups, for the faculty who didn't answer the survey, why they didn't answer it?
You know what, that is actually a really great question, no. But in creating the survey, that was actually an interest of mine, I wanted to see maybe like, what is holding folks back from potentially engaging in DIJ? And so I think, in the future, that might be a question or something that we can add. But in general, no, not at this point.
I wonder if there's sort of another way that doesn't come through you electronically?
Right, yeah.
Can I just add, Lucy, that that represents almost 75% of the teachers, so it's an incredibly solid dataset? And in any given survey, teachers don't respond. I would say, in this particular survey, teachers took a high interest in responding.
And I do, I guess I do maybe want to add, just from conversations that I've had with faculty who do DIJ work, they're not typically the ones that were gonna be like, oh, come, they'll automatically come. But from what I hear, you know, a lot of people feel, one, intimidated that they don't know enough to be engaged in DIJ work, or, you know, they're really busy, a lot of people, you know, just have, we're all busy, you know? And so maybe this doesn't rise to their priorities. But I think one of the main things that I do hear from teachers that do this work, that try to get others to engage, is, you know, a lot of people feel really fearful or intimidated, and I also think I would be remiss to not name HB2 as another fear factor that has kind of made teachers who were maybe already timid to join this work a bit more timid to join it.
Did this survey include paraprofessionals also, or just the teachers?
That is a great question.
Did the survey include the paraprofessionals?
The survey was given on teacher workshop day, right? Was that what the principal distributed? It was, okay, so.
It was teachers.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
This is a broader question. When Dr. Morse was making the case for the position, an analogy was technology, and how as educational technology started becoming more prevalent, different teachers became interested on an individual level. And they would pursue it, but there wasn't quality control or sort of a level of standard skill, and there wasn't standardization. And so that's when we made the investment in a chief technology officer, technology director. And so similarly, as we were seeing interest in DIJ across the district and different teachers getting involved in it, there might be a similar disconnect and lack of standardization and perhaps lack of quality control in that. And so that was a, and so, you know, a semester into the case, into the new role, now I'm speaking personally, I guess my hypothesis was that there'd be maybe a group that, when you're talking about addressing bias and microaggressions, there might be some that might not realize that a bias was being shown or a microaggression was being made. There might be a second segment that was sort of uncomfortable, they might recognize that something was wrong, but just didn't have the, just whether HB2 or something else sort of avoided responding to it. Then there might be this third group that was trying to address the bias and microaggression, but maybe doing it in a less skillful way, in a way that might be causing more harm to some folks than, you know, than what they didn't intend. And so I'm curious of these three categories, or especially the third one, what your experience has been in working with faculty so far?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I will say, I've encountered kind of all three of those scenarios, and I think also, within the last, the last piece, I've really helped support in terms of being a thought partner, or if something like that happens, we've met to talk through, okay, what, I tried to touch base around the context and hear what happened. I think in particular, there was a student who actually reached out through a teacher, and the teacher connected us, and I ended up meeting with the student, and she was talking about, an instance of bias that happened in one of her classes. And she mentioned, you know, I really don't think that the educator meant to do this, but I'm wondering if there's a way for education to take place. And so within that, I reached out to the educator, and we just had a conversation about, you know, what happened, and, you know, addressed this situation in that way. I tried to bring in the student to see if she would feel comfortable in, you know, addressing it, or having me there while she addresses it, but she was not comfortable, so, instead, you know, I kind of took lead in advocating for her in that way. And honestly, the conversation with the educator went really well, you know, I think there was some nervousness, but after we talked through it, you know, we talked through how it was probably unintentional, but, you know, in the future, being mindful of different comments that might be made, and the impact that they have on students. So, that's just one example, but in other ways, I've also helped, I think more proactively, so particularly with principals, and thinking about, if certain issues come up, sometimes they reach out to me to be like, so how should I respond to this? Or let's think through, you know, sending an email, or how we should craft this. So, I think I've been really useful in that way. But I like that you brought up the three different scenarios, because that's actually something that I've been thinking about in terms of the professional development plan, and how bias really takes on so many different forms, and there's so many different levels, and some folks might not even be at the place where they know what bias is, and there might be people that know what bias is, and address it, and might make mistakes, and how do we learn to repair that harm? So, yeah, all of that's to say, in the future, for the PD plan, I am thinking about how to embed that.
Yeah, that's great. And just a short comment, that one reason I ask is that when, we're all sort of fumbling through this, and sometimes in an attempt to support, if there's a student interaction, in an attempt to support one student, the other student might feel like they've been canceled, or they've been, you know, that, and sort of have a backlash against the whole thing. And so, at least my personal hope is that by increasing skill and standardizing approach reactions to, you know, incidents of bias or microaggression, that sort of the understanding of DIJ work and support for the raising of all those that DIJ work can bring, sort of is supporting not only our marginalized kids, but all the kids in the district.
Yeah, absolutely, because I think also naming that DIJ also includes restorative practices, which is something that we would hope to embed in a lot of our DIJ work, right? So, I'm hoping that as we continue, that folks will learn those skills to use.
And if I could also add along this, it's really important that, and this is what we've been very clear with teachers about, Rachel is not an administrator in an evaluation sense, she's a administrator in the support for curriculum and supporting the dialogue of this work. So she can very comfortably sit with a teacher, and they see her as an asset, as opposed to me going in, they would say, oh, this is the boss. So, we've been very clear with our teachers that Rachel is that asset that's available to them.
I had a question. So we spent a fair amount of time looking at the very and the extremely useful sides of the graph, was there also information to be gained from the not useful at all parts? So, the one that I looked at was the, in the learning environment, the gender inclusivity and the social emotional safety, both had larger bumps relative to the grouping in the not useful at all. And I was wondering if there was, you know, that could go one of two ways, it could be people feel really well-versed in that, and so they don't prioritize that, or they don't prioritize that because they don't think it's useful. I don't think I said that quite right, but I think you know what I'm saying. Is there any thought to looking at sort of the low-end respondents that think certain topics aren't useful at all?
Yeah, absolutely. I will say, as we were looking over the data, a lot of things did actually rise to the top, so we actually found a lot more usefulness in the themes within the qualitative data. But I would love to go back and look at the data to use that to inform potentially, maybe there's more meaning within there, but I also think we've had conversations around DIJ and how SEL is kind of embedded within that, and how we can work together within that. So, I would say that there's probably going to be elements of SEL within our DIJ work, regardless if, you know, folks feel well-versed in it or not, yeah.
I'm also curious, when it comes to the survey, if there are places where you think we're missing something, where maybe we don't know what we don't know, so we don't know that we should score it highly?
No, absolutely, and I think within this, we went through many different trials of creating the survey. At first, it was way too long and had way too many questions, and then it was way too open, because, you know, we wanted to identify a lot of different things, but we also wanted teachers to feel like they can complete this, and we wanted to feel like we could look at the evidence and be like, okay, here's some key things. So, if anything, I think this first key assessment, because I would think that the professional development plans for teachers are going to continue, but I think this has offered some initial guidance, and then as we continue throughout, you know, the future, updating a survey or gaining more insight into different elements. And I also think going through the first initial PD plan for teachers next semester, that's going to give us a lot of data as well, that will better inform our future PD, so.
Yeah, thanks. I think it's great that so many folks are reaching out to you as a resource, and to the point that it's disrupting your other plans for the way you're intending to spend your time. Is that, you said 25 plus plus outreach cases, is that spread fairly evenly across grade levels in the district? Are you seeing that more at the high school level or middle school level?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I do see it more at the middle school and high school level, and then also, a little bit higher at Massway. So Mohairat's been the hardest one that I've been trying to reach, but I have had teachers reach out to me from Mohairat as well. But I also have been working with the elementary PLC, and through not being in the buildings as much, and I recognize elementary school teachers, they live in their classrooms, so really making that a priority next semester to kind of, you know, be a bit more present in those spaces, yeah.
Others?
If I could just add to the conversation, when you build a job description with expectations, it's from a position of lack of knowledge, actually. You know, we built it with the best intentions. One of the things that we didn't see when we created it is how much of a presence Rachel's position was going to have at the state level. She's done three different presentations in her first semester here in Oyster River, and every single one of them were done with absolute excellence and response from the participating members of the panel, the legislature, or workshop. I just really wanted to say how much I appreciate Rachel's presence in the district, and obviously now, presence in the state, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for walking us through your first few months.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Rachel obviously brought her own fan club.
Anything else, Suzanne? Dr. Morse?
Before we get to our discussion level, I just want to recognize our student rep for her acceptance in NYU, just an amazing accomplishment. Early acceptance to boot, and they're lucky to have you. And then, moving on, I do want to recognize a few of our staff. Susan Leifer is our, I'm going to say, Technology Integrator, what's the official title, Josh? Digital Learning Specialist. Susan Leifer works in the Massway School as a Digital Learning Specialist, they changed the title on me, so I haven't shifted as smoothly as I should. She is the 22 New Hampshire State finalist of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. So, another highly recognized, nice staff member, and Susan's got a heart of gold, if you knew her, she just puts her whole self into the Massway School, so she's an incredible asset. I also wanted to commend the high school. I did share this email from Lori Grant with the board, but the high school staff, what an amazing crew, in accepting and supporting the PEP program at the high school. Just a myriad of activities, a myriad of support for our three and four-year-olds, and so the high school collectively deserves a pat on the back for, you know, making those three and four-year-olds feel special and part of that organization. And I had the pleasure of reading to them this past week, and it was a hoop. They are just so cute and so special, and it was the highlight of my week. And I also want to share the robotics competition. I know that a bunch of us walked in and out, and John Silverio and his crew, they just did an amazing job, you know, for us to sponsor a state competition in our new middle school was incredible, and the robotics team at the middle school, the teams have been amazing. Our high school again stepped in and were participants and supporters of our middle school program, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And like Michael, I went to the music concert last night, but he also hit the Mohairat one, the Massway one, and the middle school one. I have to say that every single music concert this winter has been off the charts. The kids have been amazing, the music has been amazing, the space has been amazing, and kudos to our music staff for all they've done to make this winter a special place. And then I would just like to share with the board that we did get a $15,000 grant from the commissioner related to our multilink effort, and we'll use that money to connect the least connected. And we'll use that money to connect the least connected town, which would be Mohairat, to get them up on multilink, and they would be a pilot for the state and for us. And then as we enter the new budget year, we'll be able to connect Durham and Lee. So we'll get the the multilink program up in Madberry for Mohairat once we get past the holiday.
What is multilink?
My question.
That, I'm sorry. That is the, you might recall that in my safety presentations, I talked about software that the 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 call centers, emergency call centers are using across the state. So it's mutual link. And part of our solution initially, Josh and my solution until we had conversations with law enforcement, was, oh, we'll just give them a laptop and they'll be able to tap into our system. But Josh would have to be monitoring it and keeping it up to speed. What we learned from our partners is that mutual link already exists in the entire state for emergency response. And they have a pathway into mutual link that allows schools to connect. So rather than a laptop solution, it would provide a software solution and allow us to control access. So if there's an emergency at one of our buildings, it would take the principal, myself, or or Josh to hit a button, and they would have instant access. So it's a much more sophisticated approach than what we thought we would have at the beginning of these conversations on school safety. And so I'm pretty excited to be able to put it in place in the new year at at Mohairat, which is the town Madbury needs it the most right now. Lee and Durham have the laptop solution. Josh made sure that they are up and running. But that's not a solution for Madbury because they don't have a full time police force. This provides better access than Lee and Durham, once it's up and running. And our goal in the summer is to connect the other two towns. So all of this conversation we've been having on safety, we actually get to a place where we have something tangible to share. So I'm pretty pretty excited by that. And Michael, then that gets us to the next major discussion. Jen Brown was hired as our communication specialist, so I invite Jen up and Josh, our technology director. Jen's been working maybe about a month less than than Rachel. And both of them have been amazing additions to our operation as a school district. Jen continues to amaze me on a weekly basis as she gives me the reports of all the things she's touched in the course of a week. But the major goal that the board had for Josh and Jen was an update on our webpage. That was one of the first things that we wanted on a, in a big way to attack. And so Josh and Jen have gone through a process and are going to share with you the company that they chose to replace our current provider. So Jen, you own the floor.
Someone already pushed the button. Thank you. You'll make me blush with your comments. Good evening, Genevieve Brown, Communication Specialist for the District. Here with Josh Olstad tonight, Director of IT. We'll present you with an update regarding the website. If I were to summarize this 10 minute long presentation in just a couple of sentences, I would say that this has been a collaborative approach. We'll continue to do so. A service provider has been selected. The timeline to launch has been established, and we have determined next steps. But talking of steps, let's take one back and see how collaborative we've been. So we have received a wealth of comment from the district and the community in general with the communication survey, so that's been part of the analysis. I've also reviewed the communication committee report from last year, consulted with Amy Stern Dell, talked with the four digital learning specialist principals, Josh, the assistant superintendent, and the superintendent. If I were to summarize the communication survey, which I've read roughly once a week at this point, with over 30 something pages worth of comments, I was able to summarize the three bullet points that you can see on this slide, which I feel summarize most of the frustrations that we've seen and challenges moving forward. So first, we have the confusing organization and navigation, talking specifically about contact information, lunch menus, bus routes, COVID-19. Also, folks are enabled to search on the website. Right now, if you search on the website, you search the whole internet, which is not giving you relevant results. And PDF documents are also unsearchable, mainly school board minutes. We also have content that's missing, general updates, calendar entries, news, information about clubs, sports, and after school activities. In order to determine the best service provider, a vendor really that would offer the most solutions to most of our problems, Josh and I created an evaluation rubric, which you have in your packet. This is a very brief summary of the detailed information that you were provided. The service providers here shown on this slide were selected based on feedback received from digital learning specialists from all schools, the IT department, mainly Josh. And they already had worked on creating a short list in the spring. And this is before my time, so would you want to say a couple of words?
Yeah, so as you all know, we've been talking about this for quite some time. Several of us were on the communications committee. And so as we were approaching getting ready for this position, I thought it'd be good to get the tech integrators together and start researching what the options are out there so that when we did hire someone, we'd have a much shorter list. So along with these companies, there was probably another three, I believe, that we did demos with last May and June. And Campus Suite, Ed Leo, and Aptigee were the ones that the tech integrators and myself felt were the best options. And then in the process of reviewing things, we found out about this other one called Gabbert, so we threw them in to just make sure we weren't missing anything. So that's how we arrived at this. And then I set up more demos with with Jen involved. And once we narrowed it down to the ones we liked, we asked them to give us a a test environment so we could actually go in, create content, actually use it like we would, and not just take the, you know, marketing department on it. And so that's how we got it down to this point, so.
The rubric includes a list of 84 must have and would be nice features divided in 11 different categories. Criterion features were selected after reviewing the communication survey, the communication committee report, and talking internally with different stakeholders. The website solutions were graded on a scale of one to five, one being poor, five being excellent. And the graph on the monitor shows our joint scoring, Josh and I, the results for each company in each category. The itemized list of each score is available in your packet in more details. But to simplify the information here, everything is presented on a scale of one to five. Our two top choices, Campus Suite and Ed Leo, were, as Josh mentioned, able to provide us with a sandbox, which is the demo live version of the website. We were tested both features and functionalities. The line that is green represent Campus Suite. It is the service recommendation we are making to the district's leadership at this time. It's an easy choice, given how obvious it became during the evaluation that the service would offer the most solutions to the most issues and scores a near perfect score in most of the 11 categories. Now, I can imagine that you might be curious what implementation and timeline might look like. This next slide shows us what we can expect in the future. This is based on the estimate provided by the vendor and also our own need to produce quality content and have a safe migration and launch. And we're looking to sign with Campus Suite by December 23rd, that's Friday this week, and have a finished draft by April 20th, which is right before spring break. It's interesting to note that by signing a contract with Campus Suite this December, we are locking in the 2022 rate, which will increase in 2023. And there's no payment to be expected before July 2023. After signature, we transition here in the orange phase of production. We will be onboarded by the vendor, create our style guide, which consists of fonts, colors we want to use, make layout decisions, content curation, and produce new and update the current visual assets. After doing all this, we will build the webpages and ask for everyone to review internally. This is the refine and review period that would take us to June 9, 2023. And by stakeholders here, I mean everyone within the district who currently has login access to the backend of the website, everyone who has a webpage that they're currently editing or updating. That's not only the digital learning specialists, but we're talking here about child nutrition, transportation, facilities, just to name a few. And I think concerning with everyone and identifying the content that needs to migrate and how to improve their pages moving forward will be really perhaps the lengthier part of the process. Once we finish that draft in April, we refine and review. And having already had those conversations internally, we can transition safely to the new website. And I think this would be about a month and a half worth of review revision. Once we're ready to launch, we'll have that launch campaign and a full operational publicly accessible website by June 19, which is before the end of the school year. If you've realized at this point just how many people touch the website, you're right. So how are we going to work together? This is a scope of responsibilities that I've drafted. I feel with the addition of a communication specialist, the district can comfortably shift how things have been done into a different work model. In this scenario, you can see here on the monitor, which I've discussed with digital learning specialists, IT principals, and the district's leadership, I would take on most of the maintenance and the housekeeping of the website. In simpler terms, I become the webmaster and everyone else is a collaborator. I do want to point that this slide is not representative of anyone's full workload. It's not a role description either. It's only portraying the areas where we intersect and specifically only related to the website. And so as the website's owner, I become the main person who creates, design, and upload content. That means the digital learning specialists remain in a very critical role. I evaluate their collaboration to a little over eight hours a month. This is in addition to their normal in classroom responsibilities. As I take on that responsibility of updating scheduled and recurring content, they remain on the front line of in school support for users, but also time sensitive updates to the website. The webpage editors, again, that's child nutrition, facilities, everyone who has login access and can edit their own webpages, they would be given the choice to do as they have been doing, to do it themselves or to outsource to me for any scheduled recurring content, which hopefully would help us mitigate the challenge we've had so far to have content fresh and updated on the website. The Director of IT, the role would change a little bit pertaining specifically to the website as they can focus on tech support, data security, and protection. And they would be removed entirely from the content updates, so less distractions for everyone. In short, the service provider we selected, Campus Suite, offers the best solution for the largest number of current issues. It's also a cost effective option. It is not as expensive as the other ones we were looking at. Among the many features available, we have a centralized, customizable calendar and enhanced search features. My suggestion is that we update the school board and everyone on February 1st, and then we can dig in a little deeper in functionalities if you have an interest in looking at the calendar or playing a little bit with different functions. Did you want to do a demo? Do we have time to show what that might look like? Okay. So keep in mind that layouts and templates have not been chosen. We'll do that in the production phase. However, if we want to show you, we have found a website that is a Campus Suite website that represents the idea, feel, and energy we want to take into the next one. Do you want to just browse that?
Yeah, and it was, I'm going to, I've already forgot what the, there we go.
D64.
So this is one that Campus Suite uses for promotional purposes, and we really liked it. They've done a great job with the pictures. It's not just buildings. Unfortunately, a lot of schools in New Hampshire have just buildings. So it's something that where Jen and I were talking about too on how to improve that. But overall, it just, it felt really smooth. It used, it actually uses the whole screen real estate instead of just a portion of it. Fairly easy to navigate. And I did want to jump over, I don't want to take up too much time, but I did want to highlight some of the calendar features that we really liked. And the way that this district has it set up is they break down all the calendars for their different schools, so you can choose some or all or whatever you want. And that can populate the calendar down below. And then you can subscribe to an entire school's calendar, or you can go into, excuse me, a specific event. And when you open it, you have quick links right there to add it to, you know, the most popular calendar applications, Google Outlook, or I think that's just an iCal. So more like iPhone feed there. You can also jump down into, they have this accessible list view. And so again, you can filter on your different schools down there, and you have just a list and right there, the quick links right there. So if you have some time, feel free to poke around on that one. We have a couple other ones, but we just thought it was a really good example just to give you an idea of what we've been thinking about. So probably open to questions at this point.
Thank you. Couple of different questions, and and one is just in terms of this contract. So this isn't anything that the school board needs to approve? Okay. And it obviously it was budgeted, I'm, you know, I'm like, thinking back, it was budgeted, okay. So so much for that. Another kind of probably a silly question, but it was interesting because today I happened to be working on a project where I actually had to look at different schools' websites and such, just coincidentally. And one of the things I noticed was a complicated, like, the web addresses. We're going to be able to keep like our ORC, because I used to, I looked at one in particular, and it was like, oh, my gosh, it was dot this, dot this, dot this, dot. Like, there were eight of them or something. It was crazy. And I was like, gosh, I hope we don't have to get into something like that. And then I had another question, but I don't remember. So I'll let somebody else ask a question, and then I'll think about it.
On the scoring rubric, the security one was pretty low for all of them. Is five like what you consider perfectly secure, or is that just generally secure? And these are kind of okay?
Yeah, so it it was more about who's responsible for the security. Is it on us? Is it on them? Because really what it comes down to is the management. So when you go to a website now, you look at the HTTPS. And are they the ones managing what's called the secure certificate? Is it something we have to manage? And so that's one of the key things. And I think, I can't remember the specifics of each one, but some of them, it was something that was on us to manage. Other ones, they just took care of it. So that's really the big thing. There wasn't anything major that jumped out as a concern. Because we're not going to be, our goal is not to store sensitive information on here. This is going to be public facing, so we wouldn't be uploading anything private there.
I do have a couple more, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The system we use now, the website, is also responsible for all the messaging?
Yes.
Out to the district? How how do they measure up when it comes to?
Yes. So we are planning to decouple those things. And so we've been demoing, or actually not demoing, we purchased for athletics a product called Parent Square, and that is a specific communication tool. So our goal is to transition to Parent Square district wide. But in terms of priority, it's get the website done first and then transition over the summer with Parent Square. So that'll be coming down the road. But we're already mostly, or I shouldn't say mostly, we're already using for athletics and some of the clubs. So we're expecting an E. and some of the clubs, so we're expecting an easier transition there. And that'll be targeted mostly at families. They do have a way for people who don't have kids in the school to subscribe to updates, so that's something we're looking at. I know Denise, that's been a concern of yours for a while, and so they have a nice feature where as, like Noe, when she does her newsletter, she can select, you know, say it's called "The Public," she can just check off a box for "The Public," and as long as Denise has signed up, she can get those emails too. So that's, that's, we wanted to get the website dealt with, the calendar, and then transition over to that over the summer is our plan.
So just to be clear, that means that you're planning to replace School Messenger with Parent Square?
Yes.
By the fall?
By the fall.
Okay.
Yep. And where we already have it implemented, you know, the, kind of the big hurdles, I don't think we'll see it at the classroom level. We'll see it at, at the way we're using it right now, at the general administration level, and then work to get it down to the classroom level, so.
Would there be a way to allow the PTOs to each have their own separate page within? Or, so right now, the PTO, I know in Mohermet, delivers its newsletter through the messaging system?
I will, I believe there is some PTO functionality. I can't remember exactly, but I believe there is some stuff in there. And I believe we host one of them, one of the PTOs, on our website. So as we go through the website, we'll want to take a look at that too and make sure they get what they need access to.
There might be a policy issue there with school-related groups and how, which technology assets they have access to or not, because it's not just going to be PTOs, it'll be other groups as well that are interested in.
But I mean, like, we're using the messaging system, or the PTO is, to distribute its newsletters, that's still something that can be handled.
I don't think they're actually using it. I believe they're sending it to the front offices, and they're sending it out on their behalf.
But that's still something that can be accomplished?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't see why it could not be.
Okay. And then the last question I had was, our current system is affiliated with Power School in some way?
Nope.
It's not? So is there any issue about?
Nope, nope. Everything is, there's actually a tighter integration between Parent Square and Power School. And on the, on the website side, we're not doing any integration with Power School right now, and I don't believe we'll need to.
Just to follow up on what Matt said, and it was one of my questions as well. The, I've lost it now. Okay, I'll start with this one. There were several questions related to video content, and it seemed within the rubric that was disparate answers, so within security, it can host the video content without relying on YouTube. Campus Suite did poorly there, but then in other areas, it has the ability to upload or link videos directly on the website, and that's fine. Does that mean we are still stuck with YouTube if we go with Campus Suite? And how much does that matter for our content?
Yeah, most of the companies, if I remember correctly, Ed Leo was the only one that had, they had the most flexibility with video, but it was still very limited. They were saying "video clips." So no one really had a video hosting solution, and everyone recommended YouTube. So some of them will take clips, and some of them will not. There's not a limit in terms of that you can't upload a video, but they're very cautious against it. And I believe a lot of it has to do with just the amount of space it could take up, because people could go kind of crazy, and all of them provide unlimited space. So I think that's how they keep it that way. They try to limit that to just video clips. And yeah, in talking to my peers, I haven't been able to find a good alternative to YouTube, just based on what we can do, the way that Andy's tools can automatically stream the games to YouTube and things like that. So unfortunately, I think that's probably our best bet.
I think Heather's question is really an important question, not in relation to YouTube, but in fact that no one vendor does everything perfectly. And so this is the best of the vendors that we think meets our needs. And so I think that's really the true answer across the board. This is the best of what's out there that would meet our needs.
And then the other one I had was, on the rubric, there's the ability to process payments, and Matt, this is why the PTO websites will never fold in to the district, is because we run too many sales. We had the stores, or at least the elementary school ones run stores, and we wouldn't, that's a whole bad setup. But I was interested, you know, what the thought process was for putting it on the rubric. Were we looking for another way to accept payments, because we already have School Titan, and, but that's sort of Doris's thing, and so I was curious about why that was added.
No one specifically asked about processing payments. Thought it would be a nice add-on if we were able to get that on the website. Ed Leo charges, I think it's two or four percent. Everyone who does takes a cut on the transaction, so that's definitely a downside. Everyone recommended just linking to an outside website to process the payment, whether it be PayPal or another service, like YouTube.
Is, is Campus Suite connected with a larger parent technology company?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't believe they're publicly held or anything like that. They seem fairly small on, I think I've had about four calls with them, and the CEO was on two of them. And so that's one of the things we really liked, was they seemed really approachable and really hands-on with their support. And Jen did a little more digging. We got her involved with a national school public relations professional organization, so she was able to ask some questions about how the different companies respond to customer, customer requests, and we really felt that Campus Suite was really good in that regard. There are two New Hampshire districts that are using it, New Market and SEU 21. We weren't big fans of the designs of their sites, but I have talked to, I did talk to the IT director in New Market, and he said they've been really helpful. They've redone the design of their site a couple times. So they did feel like a little more of an agile company compared to the larger ones.
I have another question. Do we host, or are they hosting?
They host it all.
Great, this seems like really good progress, so excited to see the product in spring.
Yes, we are too.
My husband is really picky about things, so if you want someone to beta test, I am happy to throw him at you, and he will stop picking at me.
I think you have my email.
Did any of the other demo, last question, I'm sorry. The other demo sites that you went to have high schools? So this was a really great website. It was really easy to navigate, very searchable. Their minutes and agenda, the way they have that set up with the checkmarks is great. But there are no high schools in this district? So there was very limited as far as like athletic events and that kind of thing? Is there another?
I will look, I'm pretty sure the, there was another one, and I'm blanking on where it was, I just know they were yellow jackets. Because it was a yellow, it was very yellow. And I believe they had a high school, but I will double-check. We've looked at a lot of different websites, and, so I can't remember all the details, but I didn't, I mean, good catch, I did not notice that there was not a high school there. I will, I, we can look at the other ones they listed and send off a couple more. This one just really popped for us in terms of the design, so.
But when it came to those athletic events and that kind of calendar and scheduling and notifications, was it?
So I think that's something we are gonna, we, Jen and I have talked about this, because what's the best way to do this? Because the way the NHIA does it, through, everything has to go through their site for scheduling purposes. And it's, and we just talked about this the other day, you know, it's middle school all the way up through high school. And so to kind of get that data out and strip out all the crazy advertising that they have, we'd have to find a way to extract it all and then bring it back into the system. So I don't know if we can. It's something we can look at and see if it makes sense to go down that road where the site the NHIA has does have every practices, games, everything, all in one place. It just has all that advertisement.
Matt, we've had that discussion over the years and how to separate ourselves from that site, because I don't like the site because of the advertising.
Yeah, and everything's just very buried, the page after page, yeah.
And, but we haven't been successful in divorcing ourselves of that.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much, yeah. All right. Sue, anything now, or are we saving it for a discussion? Okay. All right, that brings us to the student representative.
Yeah, so I won't talk too much about the high school concert, because I know that was already talked about a lot, but I will just say that it was really cool, and it was a great experience, because I've never performed here, it's always been at the high school. So it was a very different experience having all of this full and being in the center. It was really cool. For winter sports, there have been openers for basketball, hockey, indoor track, and swimming slash diving, so that's really exciting that winter sports are underway. The food drive collection was today, so it was very busy during advisory. All the people were bringing down their boxes to the NPR, and that was really cool, because a lot of advisories needed more boxes than we provided with Senate, so it was really successful. That was awesome. The senior class is going to be hosting a paint night fundraiser, which is going to be on Thursday, January 12, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the cafeteria. That's going to be really fun. Our art teacher is helping us out with that, and then we're also looking for parents to volunteer to bring in snacks and drinks and things like that, and pizza will be provided. And we're looking for more people to sign up for that, so a little plug there. And the junior class just had their Candygram fundraiser, and that was a success. People from the junior class came in to deliver those during advisory early this week. And then also during the winter break, there's going to be a basketball holiday tournament hosted here as usual, so that'll be great to have a busy gym starting on the 26th.
Quick question on the art class. What age or grade range are you looking for for participants?
It's open to everyone. I think we suggested ages about 10 and up, but it's, it's welcome, anyone's welcome.
Thank you very much. All right, no finance committee report? So we'll move to unanimous consent. Is there anything on the unanimous consent agenda that anybody would like to discuss separately? Seeing nothing, I will move for approval of the unanimous consent agenda, which includes for second read and adoption, policy B1, school board, acknowledging school board candidates for office, policy ICA, the school calendar, policy BBAA, school board member authority, policy BBAB, selection and duties of officers, and for deletion, policy BDB, board officers, and also to approve for second read and adoption, the 2023-24 school calendar. A second from Brian. All those in favor of the unanimous consent agenda? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor, that's adopted. All right, so then we're on to discussion and action items. So let's start with the default budget and the warrant articles. Yes? I think we're okay.
So I just wanted to bring them back to you one more time. You asked about the default budget, and if the bond information was correct, it is correct. Remember, we retired the high school bond, and we're introducing the first payment on the second bond, and that's only interest, so that is correct. Warrants, I think we're good there. Questions? Anything we need to change? Are we good to go?
What's the difference, delta, between what we approved for Fund 10 already, or what we've already approved versus the default?
Nine thousand seven, $976,800. Nine seven six eight oh oh.
That's the difference in what?
In the general fund that we have put forward in the default general fund.
So it's, the default is almost a million dollars less?
Yes, correct.
Why is the difference on the warrant only about $300,000?
Because it includes the other funds.
Okay.
So I just took out those funds so that you'd know how much of it is just general fund.
Right, okay.
Makes sense? And remember, I told you on those, that whole total there, a lot of that is new positions. Remember, we put in several new positions this year that were not part of last year's budget. Several of them were ESAR-funded, so that, those weren't part of it. We also lost Title I funding, so that wasn't part of last year's. So I think there's four positions in there. And then any one that's not on a collective bargaining agreement, which would be the administrators, the, all of the hourly staff are not, their raises and benefits are not in there, so that's what makes up that almost a million dollars. All are non-union, yes.
Well, benefits would be included though, right? Because that's contractual. If there's an increase in benefits.
On the increase, but I mean the increase on the increase. So like VICA and things like that, retirement, that wouldn't be included in that. So that makes a difference too. Questions? We good? So they'll be back at the next meeting for your signature on the default, so we'll have them for the public hearing.
Do we need a motion to accept that, or?
I think next meeting would be, right? Yeah, you can do it at the next meeting, if we follow what we've done in the past. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. All right, and then we've got policies for first read. Denise?
Okay, so, let me get my right screen up. Okay. So for first read, we have policies IHBA, IHBAC, which is developmental delays as qualifying disabilities. I'll turn, I'll take those two for starters. So these policies have been vetted by both our, you know, legal counsel and Catherine. They update, they're basically updates to current policies to, you know, coincide, obviously, with the law. And then as far as policy, we also have policy IKFC, which is the alternative diploma, and JICK, which is bullying and cyberbullying. For JICK, Suzanne went through it, again, with our legal counsel. The things that were removed were actually in other policies, and it was determined the more appropriate placement was in the other policies. So that's why, if you're saying, why, you know, why did we remove this particular section or what have you, it's, it's all, they're all things that were in another policy. And then, yeah, that was it for those, for those for first read. And then we have one for deletion, which is eight, oh, two for deletion. IHBA and ACE. The ACE is being replaced by ACAA, and again, this was something that was vetted through legal counsel. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of those? Or anything to add, either Matt or Denise? Yes?
I'm slow today.
That's okay.
All right, so the first two?
Yep.
Are they wholesale replacements of policies we have? Because I'm used to seeing the crossed-out stuff, and there's no crossed-out stuff.
Right, right. That's, that was a whole new wording on that. I believe, correct, correct me if I'm right, replaced, I feel like it replaced a whole other policy, but it's not there. Yeah, so I know there, there are new, there are new policies that need to, you know, be enacted in terms of, to reflect current, current legal, you know, law and all that kind of thing. Yeah, I'm not seeing, because usually we have it crossed out.
So IHBA looks like a rewrite, because that's on the list of deletion, but really it's a.
Yes, okay, yep, I've got it in my notes now.
IHBAC?
Yeah, IHBA is, yeah, right. IHBA is completely, the old policy was completely deleted. That is correct. That's down, further down below, that's why I'm not seeing it right now.
Do we want to hold these and ask Catherine to explain them next time?
I mean, I can tell you that they were definitely, you know, explained that they were, had been vetted by Catherine and legal, you know, our legal counsel in terms of policies that needed to be updated. So yeah, IHBA, it's. that needed to be updated. So yeah, IHBA, it's a, replaces an old IHBA.
Yeah, so I just affirm what Denise was saying, and we can do first read tonight and then have Catherine go through them, Michael, before you vote on second read, if you want.
No, part of it's because I missed the deleted bits at the end. I didn't realize they weren't new policy deleted bit. The deleted bit is all the way at the end of the list of policies. So I was just, that was, I just wanted to make sure, I like looking at them both. And then, just to repeat what you said, Denise, that the bullying, cyber, bullying and cyberbullying policy.
Yes.
All of those deletion bits are because they're repetitive against other policy.
Yes, and it was determined that the more appropriate placement were, you know, was in the other policies. I am seeing, I always have to try and find where my original notes are. For policy IHBAC, that is a new policy we are required, I wrote required. So it says optional, but we're required to use this, this language.
Question about the bullying and cyberbullying. And I'm not sure whether, at what level the question is. I had heard that cyberbullying episodes needed to be investigated even off of the school campus. So sort of any episode of cyberbullying in the community, even if it hadn't been shown, had been proven to interfere with the students' educational opportunities, create a hostile educational environment, or substantially disrupt the orderly operation of the school, that the school was required to follow up on those. I don't see that here, and I'm wondering if I misunderstood that or what the cyberbullying is.
That is not a universal requirement. We investigate if there's a threat to a student. We would absolutely follow through on that. But normally, it's the disruption to the school environment. So something happening off-campus comes into the school, then it becomes our responsibility. Something happens off-campus and it doesn't come into the school, then it's not our responsibility.
One of the changes in the cyberbullying and cyberbullying policy is to change the reporting requirement. What's removed was the superintendent shall report to the school board all substantiated instances of bullying and cyberbullying, and changed to, reporting will be at the discretion of the superintendent. Can you comment on why that change was made? Policy committee?
It's just that the attorneys felt that that was, that was not required in the process, and we very rarely have a cyberbullying issue that rises to the level of reporting it to the school board. And so that's why it was deleted.
So with that, I guess I'd like to make a motion unless there are any other questions. Oops.
No, go, go ahead.
No, did you have a question?
No.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve for first read, policy IHBA, programs for pupils with disabilities, IHBAC, developmental delays as qualifying disabilities, IKFC, alternative diploma for students with significant cognitive disabilities, JICK, bullying and cyberbullying, pupil safety and violence prevention, and the deletion of the current policy of IHBA, and also ACE, which is non-discrimination on the basis of handicap disability.
We have a motion from Denise and a second from Heather. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the policies for first read? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. All right. Next up, a board election item from UC.
Thanks, Michael. Without preamble, I'll read a statement, a letter dated today. Dear Dr. Morris and members of the Oyster River School Board, as of today, I resign my seat effective March 3, 2023, with the intention that I will continue to serve through March 3, and that community members will select the next Durham representative in the March 7 municipal election. This long advance notice helps avoid the time-consuming process of selecting an interim member or the prospect of an empty seat, while also enabling my seat to be added to the municipal ballot and candidates to come forward in January. I joined OffCycle in October 2020 and will be leaving OffCycle after two and a half years. During this challenging period for the Oyster River community, we were able to get students back to school, prioritizing their mental health while managing physical risk using a COVID dashboard. We invested in DEIJ and communications capacity and held events to celebrate and bridge the many facets of diversity in our community. Along the way, I am grateful to have had the opportunity to work with and learn from each of you, as well as Tom Neurkirk, Al Holland, and all the incredible staff, students, and parents I had the honor to work alongside. On a personal note, I am eager to restart my PhD dissertation, which has been on hold since COVID began. And I'll end off script just by saying, board members and anyone watching, this is the time to identify and recruit Durham residents who you think would be strong representatives in the coming cycle.
All right, so we would need a motion to accept resignation of UC effective March 3. Brian?
Accept.
Motion from Brian and a second from Matt. Denise?
I just want to thank UC and for your service, and learned much from you as well. And yeah, thank you. And I know you still will be with us through March, which is greatly appreciated as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your hard work and your service to the community, and for all the mentoring you've helped me ease into this first year. It's made it much, much easier. So thank you very much, and we'll miss you.
We still get to, we still get to do that a few more times before, there's, there's five more meetings plus a budget hearing and a, okay. All right, so we're looking for a vote on the motion to accept resignation of UC Terrell from the school board effective March 3. All those in favor of accepting the resignation? We have six in favor and the student rep in favor. Opposed? Absentions, abstention. All right. Are there committee updates this evening?
I have notes. I am prepared. All right. And since Suzanne didn't give any in her update, I get to give all the juicy tidbits. Excellent. All right, so the Sustainability Committee met on December 13. And we've been lucky that we have some of the representatives from the Oyster River High School Sustainability Committee attending those meetings. And they were telling us that nine of the students went to the Youth Climate Leaders Academy and learned a lot, and were really energized and motivated. And I hope we can hear from them in the future, because it's, it's just really very positive to listen to them and the things they are doing at the high school. So working on one of our goals of reducing waste, we discussed purchasing compost bins for the classroom. Rachel Allen is leading that charge at MoHaramit, and those teachers are committed to adding compost bins into their classroom. Sarah O'Brien is working on surveying teams at the middle school to seeing if we can get team-based composting bucket for, for that setup. And the Sustainability Club at the high school has said that 16 faculty want bins at the high school, and they're working on finding a funding mechanism for that. One of the difficulties, though, is that each building has to have their own strategy for emptying the bins. And so for instance, at MoHaramit, they're still working through that, but Rachel was saying that maybe her second graders on Fridays could go around and get all the buckets from all the different classrooms and take them to the cafeteria to be emptied into the one large cafeteria composting bin. Similarly, using advisories at the high school or advisory or flex at the middle school to do those kinds of things. So there's still details on, on the mechanics of that to be worked out, but really excited by that. The really big news is that I think we're confirmed, right? February 2 is our first community dinner. And we are hoping to have some clubs, the Oyster River High School Sustainability Club, the Middle School Social Justice Club, come and talking about reducing waste both from the, the purchasing side as well as from the composting or the, the sort of end product side. As well as, we're trying to see if we can have some farmers come in to set up tables, because one of the best things we can do to help reduce waste on the, sort of the incoming stream, is shopping local, using refilling stations, that kind of thing. So, and there's been, we've been talking a little bit about a movie that we may show at the end, but that's not confirmed yet. So we're still working on some of those details, which we will be talking about at our next meeting on January 17. But put the community dinner on your calendar, February 2.
Is there a time for the community dinner?
They said it starts at 5.
Thank you. Other committee updates? All right. Anybody who'd like to speak for a public comment this evening? None? All right. Under closing actions, you can see our upcoming meeting dates. We've got a regular meeting on January 4, the public hearing on the budget on January 11, and the regular meeting on January 18. We don't have any non-public scheduled for this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion from Heather and a second from Brian. All those in favor of adjournment? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. We're adjourned. Thank you.